All right, 6:30 on my watch. Start the call to meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
allegiance to the land of the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God. No individual can alter its status quo.
All right, look for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion is second. Everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passes four zero. Public comment? If anybody wishes to have any public comment or share any information with the council, if you stand up to the microphone for us, please. All right, seeing none, we will go on to the consent agenda. Is there any changes or anything need to be pulled for discussion on the consent agenda?
I had a question under reports. See number one, Public Works Report on page 11. Talks about getting a bid for an addition for the Public Works Building. For the, yeah. And just wondering, is it possible to do something with the shed here and bring that over as opposed to building a new one? Was that looked at?
I suppose I should ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
I apologize for that. Make a motion to approve the agendas plan. Do we need a consent agenda? No, we don't.
You can pull it and
Okay.
and put it under Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and then I just have a, there's, should be a correction in the workshop meeting minutes. The version that I read had Boder missing at the council meeting, but he was present at the workshop. So, he should be. All right, you know, it could have happened, but it didn't.
I wasn't here. Okay, so then we'll move that, so where did you move that to? Number six, to Public Works?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that'll bring us to number six. Reports, recommendations of city departments, consultants, commissions, and committees. Number one, Public Works.
So, did we approve the consent agenda and then go?
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay, and then I'll second it with that, pulling that item and that change.
All right. All in favor of consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Not in favor? None? Motion passes. And that brings us to number six. Reports of recommendations, city departments, consultants, commissions, and committees. Number one, Public Works.
Okay, I'll let Kyle go to the podium and start this agenda item.
Which agenda? I got confused.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the pressure washer.
Okay, start with that, then end with the shed? Is that kind of the?
Yeah, I put, oh, I put it as three, the shed. So, it'll be the third item.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're doing it in the right order. So, all right, members of the council. Staff is proposing the purchase of a steam washer for the wastewater treatment plant from All America Pressure Washers in about the $6,740. Forty dollars due to the COVID-19 and other germs and diseases found in wastewater proper cleaning and PPE at the wastewater treatment plant is more important now than ever. The steam washer will be used to clean and disinfect walls, floors, tanks, fusers, aerators, et cetera. This piece of equipment will be used routinely and be very valuable to staff overall. Like there was a CDC link talking about COVID and wastewater. This was something we originally wanted to purchase, and then we got the money for the COVID cleanings or the COVID money, I guess, to use on stuff like this, so.
Would this fall under that CARES Act then?
Yep.
And it was in the, it was in the, kind of the discussion that we had at the last council meeting on that list of items that we were looking into.
All right. Somebody make a motion to approve to purchase the steam cleaner?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a steam pressure washer from All America for the amount listed and have it covered under the CARES Act.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion passes four to zero. Moving to?
Kyle, the next one was your trail and road repairs?
Road and trails? Okay. Looking for a motion approving the trail and road repairs needed for 2020. Throughout the summer, city staff has compiled lists of streets and trails that are needed, that are in need of repair. The parks are, the parks that need a majority of repairs are Old Schoolhouse Park and Discovery Park. In Old Schoolhouse Park, staff is proposing to remove and replace about 400 feet of trail at the west end of the park. And in Discovery Park, staff is proposing to remove and replace about 136 feet of trail in various sections throughout the park. Public Works staff will remove the old pavement and prep the area for new pavement. Kind of divided the quote into two separate sections, kind of knowing what the trails are going to cost and what the roads are going to cost. Mueller's and Sons came in at a cheaper price at $13,175 to do the trail work. Staff is also proposing that the city pave the alleyway by the church between Second Street Northwest and County Road 30. This is the city's last alleyway that needs to be paved. Currently, the south end of the alley is paved and is very rough shape overall. Also, Birch Avenue, the alley along Westridge Park, needs some more road work around some manholes. So, and those two quotes are kind of divided out. Mueller's came in cheaper with those, with that work at $11,865. And staff is proposing to have W. M. Mueller and Sons complete the work in the amount of $25,915. And we would be funding that out of the street improvement fund. Correct, Maggie?
And we have money in there?
We do. So, we have, we've been levying so much each year to do that capital fund. Our street project this year came in lower than we thought, and so we do have, we would be able to take on that $25,915 out of that fund because we have a little bit of reserve, and then we also, our project came in lower, so.
For both of those projects, the trail and the pavement?
Yes, yep.
And it would be done this year?
Hopefully this fall, yes.
So, this wasn't a CIP item, or?
I don't, I, I think they were, the trails, the full trails were CIP items, but we're boosting that up a little bit to do areas that are in pretty rough shape. I don't believe that the
As far as the road CIP items, I don't believe.
The, the alleyway was not in the
The alleyway was not in the, that alleyway, I don't, it kind of got forgot about when we did the other alleyways.
Okay, so basically you saw extra money in your budget, and you're like, let's get this done.
Right, and that alleyway needed repair work anyway, and if we're repairing that, like a 50, 75-foot section, it's like, it'd be better to, we're improving it, so we'd probably blacktop it and type.
And so then are we, so we're taking this out of the street fund? Because I know there was discussion about
Yeah, there has to be further discussion between the council and the park commission as to what future, like for future trail, like when we do, like full replacement, where that's going to come out of? Is it a combination? Is it going to be, like, do we want to levy, start doing these projects out of just complete street, or do we want to do park commission? I think once we get, like, I think we're still waiting on that trail report from Bolton and Mink. So, once we kind of get a better idea of, of the, kind of year-to-year projects, when we start doing street, I think our plan is when we're doing street projects that we would make sure that our trails and sidewalks were done at the same time. But at that, when we look at that report, the idea would be, okay, where are we going to fund these out of? Staff's proposing right now to do it out of street improvement fund, but there will have to be a more discussion later on as to where we're going to budget those from.
Do we have a current balance in that fund that's easy to find?
I can get it to you. I think it's, we're putting another 100 in there this year, so it'll be about 315, I believe. And I think our project came in at, our street project came in at two, two, oh gosh, I'd have to look, 280, I believe? Or no, less than that. I'd have to look, I can give you guys an update after this meeting. I can send out an email. Oh, no, that was 180 it came in. I'm looking, I'm thinking about the water tower. Sorry, Melon Overlay came in at 180. We have plenty in there right now.
I know Old Schoolhouse really needs it
We actually had budgeted 30,000 last year that we didn't use, that was rolled over, I believe, into the 435 fund, right, Maggie?
Right.
Because we, we were going to use that to repair and replace all of the Old Schoolhouse trail, but then we ran into some ADA plan, ADA compliance stuff that we got to make sure we are in compliance with, and also park board discussing possibly moving the trail and doing some stuff around the Old Public Works Building, so.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the two paving projects, including Old Schoolhouse Park, Discovery Park, Hidden Crossing. The other one is going to be Birch Avenue and the alleyway by the church for a total of $25,915 by William Mueller's.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries four zero. Next thing on the agenda is item B, or, no, we had
It would be the
We have to go to three? The one we polled?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, what was your question again?
My question is, is in your reports on page 11, it says that you met with a local contractor to discuss expanding the Public Works Building, that you had room on the north side, and you got the quote for data.
Yep, yep.
Have we entertained the thought of finally moving that shed? So, instead of expanding, maybe just move it?
Right, and we've kind of, we've discussed this a few times at our Public Works Committee meetings, and this shed here, we had proposed moving it to the new location, and when it got moved to the new location, it had to meet certain code requirements and everything to bring it up to standard, and then we had, would have to do additional work to the front of it for wind's coating and everything to bring it up to our covenants that we have in the industrial park. So, by the time we sink all this money into it, is it gonna, we want to make sure we're not just throwing money away, and then in five years, we got to do something else. So, we're looking for the best solution right away instead of, you know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's also roof issues?
Yes, that's the next thing is this, you know, we were going to patch it and do these other certain things when we were proposing moving it before, but now that it's kind of sat there a little longer, it's like, okay, tin is faded, garage doors are faded, the roof, ridge cap completely needs to be replaced. It's, it's really a gamble, and then also, moving it and getting utilities moved out of the way is absolutely a heck of a chore.
More cost effective to tear it down.
Right. That's kind of the point we're at, and then even just, I mean, we, we've even talked, discussed moving the building to the wastewater treatment facility, where it'd be nice to have some additional, some storage for equipment and everything, because right now we don't have any. But that was kind of the same discussion. It's like, okay, you know, how the building is right now, is it practical? Which, yes, it is, I agree, but, I mean, there's certain things we'd like to change on it, so.
So, we should put it on a future agenda to do something about that shed, because it's just sitting there and it's
And then another, we are utilizing the shed right now, since we got more plow equipment and everything else, so, I mean, the dump truck's in it, and then the sheriff is parking their squad car in there, so we are utilizing the building, so we got to make sure.
Yeah, we're trying to, I think the discussion has centered around, like, it's kind of like a domino thing, like, we need this to happen before this happens, and then this and this. But I think at the last Public Works Committee meeting, the idea was to bring it back to council for discussion, because I think, and with this, the new, like, just, it's not something that we think is feasible yet, but we, we want to at least consider start budgeting for it.
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up is because that was new to me, and when I saw it in the report, I'm like, hmm, haven't heard about that, so I just wanted to inquire, that was all.
Absolutely, and that's kind of this, put it in the report, kind of start the discussion. I mean, it's not looking something that we're going to dive into next year right away. It'd be nice, but
Well, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Board, someone just mentioned, maybe even, I know it'll be more work, but do an action for the building?
Right.
And then they would have to take it out, but it's just, you know.
Versus us having, yeah.
So, just wanted to throw it out there so that we remember.
And it kind of keeps getting brought up, because park board really wants to get it out of there, because it's become an eyesore, it's in the middle of the park, and then they can do so much more with the area that way, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will move on to six B, engineering, fire station site design proposal.
Yes, so this topic, it's just to review and discuss whether to approve the city engineer to do the site design work for the public works fire station. If we didn't have, have them do it, the architect would hire a civil engineer to do it, so it just makes sense to have our own engineer do the work. And so, yeah, Dave, Dave is here, but he's must have gotten caught up in the meeting, but it, it just includes preparing plans and specs for grading and drainage, stormwater, driveway, the aprons, the drive lanes, the sidewalks, and stuff like that. So, what we are, Bolton and Mink is proposing 10,000 for it, so what would happen is Brunton would deduct 10,000 off of their cost, and then we would get billed by Bolton and Mink instead. So, that would even out. And then in addition, in Dave's letter, he did say about, you know, when we do these projects, usually they city engineer, regardless of who is doing the project, they kind of do oversight, and so they are proposing that with this project, it would be about 5,000 as well of oversight work. So, with that, we're just looking for a motion to allow Bolton and Mink to do this work, and instead of having the architect hire somebody to do it.
I feel more comfortable with that. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we need, in the motion, do we, do we need to include a dollar amount, that $15,000? We just want the motions to say that we approve them to do it?
You can just, I would, I would say just approve based on this, well, you can
Further letter.
Further letter.
I'll make the motion to approve Bolton and Mink to do all the engineering and overseeing at a total of the $15,000 per their letter.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Move to administration, see one.
Okay, so this is just an, an update. So, we're getting, getting into the project for the water tower painting coming up in the next couple of weeks. So, I know in the past, we have had discussions on whether we would pay cash. We do have the ability to pay cash, but I, I wanted to bring another option to you just in case, because when I talked to the financial advisor, he did say interest rates are 50 to 50-year low. And so, I just wanted to bring that option to you as well, just for consideration. And so, what I, what I did, or what we did is, we haven't put out the proposal for the tanker yet to the local banks, and so we decided that we would consolidate it into one bond. So, we already approved the tanker, our financing, but this would just wrap this, the water tower in with it. So, the project cost that we thought for the water tower was going to be, we had originally in our CIP estimated it to be about 410,000. The total costs have been more, so 327,000. And I do have a breakdown on page 95, sorry, it's going to worry. Just kind of, MK painting is, is, the actual painting portion was 271, and that's what we would be financing. Again, we do have the ability to pay cash, but at this time, the financial advisor did say, you know, with the interest rates, and then also keeping that cash on hand because of kind of what's happening with COVID and everything, what makes sense as well, in case, you know, just, just having more in the bank. So, that's, that's the advice that was given to me, and I, I agree that honestly, we can go either way, but I wanted to provide that information to you. So, if, if you do feel comfortable with paying with cash, we can go that route, otherwise there is a resolution in your packet tonight that would allow us to move forward with a five-year bond with, that includes the tanker that we've already approved. Yep, it would be, again, five, five years, and we would put that out to the banks for proposals. And I do have in there a, kind of a report, pre-sale report from Ellers that was put together, and then a, kind of a schedule that we would be working off of. So, it would come back to council for the award, so whatever proposals that we did get from the banks, we would be able to look at those interest rates that they're proposing, and then we would be able to decide in that meeting which one makes sense for us.
Could you still pick cash if we decide we didn't want to go the bank route at all?
Oh, yeah, for sure. If you, if you think that it doesn't come in the way you want it to come in, like with the interest rates, we can, we can change our minds. But yeah, this, and then on page 103, it kind of shows what, what, the breakdown of our financing, and then there's a schedule of kind of the five years, kind of what we were, we are looking to pay each year. So, part of that would be enterprise, and then part of that would be levy for the tanker. So, yeah, so I'm open for, so again, it would be about 22,600 for the tanker, and then if you go up, or if you go down, about 61, 61 to 60 for the water tower. So, with that, I, I just wanted to open that up for discussion and
Definitely like the idea of keeping extra cash around right now and everything that we have going on, so that way it seems to make sense to me. Don't necessarily like paying interest, we don't have to pay interest, but.
And that's kind of where I'm sitting, it's like, we've budgeted for this, we have the cash.
It was in our CIP.
Yep, so we should just pay it instead of adding on all this extra interest, which we're going to just pass it on the homeowners.
Could we, could we see, I mean, I would be open to seeing what kind of interest rates we do get and then making a decision, but I'm, I'm more on the possibly paying cash, but we're just starting our budgeting process. So, maybe
Well, and that's one thing I want to bring up too, is when we do get to that budget discussion, I want to let you know that we finally did get all the information from the county and our market. Growth is not where it has been in the last few years. It's, it's way lower.
It surprises me.
Which is what I'm, I know. So, we, we've seen in the last couple of years more like the eight to 11% range, we're only at like two. So, that really, that's something that's, we got to take into consideration. Our, our, our growth, like our construction growth went up, but our actually, our market value went down. And so, we're not seeing that growth that we've seen in the last few years. I don't really know yet why, but why it's happened, but it's, it's very com, or it's, you, it's, the county only grew 3% this year. A lot of the smaller cities in Carver County are in the same situation as us, where we're seeing it at only like 2%. Some cities have grown, like the larger cities have grown a little bit more than us, but it's, it's like across the board. So, I think that's one, I don't know if it's COVID, I don't know really, I don't, I'm hoping I'll have an explanation at the next meeting. I just got the numbers last week, and so I don't really know, have an explanation at this time as to why things are where they're at, but that's definitely going to impact our budget. As you'll see when I go into it, we're going to have to make some decisions and probably put some projects on hold.
Yeah, I think then I would make a motion to just at least go out for a five-year bond on both these projects to see what interest rates come in, so then when, give us a little time. So, when you can get us our full budget, we kind of know where we're sitting.
Yeah, and we can always
This isn't going to stop us doing our projects, though.
No, no, we just have to kind of reassess. Oh, sorry.
I forgot the motion.
Oh, it was to, it was to go forward with looking at financing options for
Any further discussion?
Yeah, it wouldn't be that we would have to stop, like, projects that we've started. It's just kind of like, we just have to reevaluate our CIPs, and like, I think we're fine with the projects that we have, but like, our actual capital funds that we're levying, we might have to reduce those a little bit, which, which may just mean that we have to make different decisions on how we're going to finance those projects. So, it's, we're, there's, this is just a preliminary.
Yep, that's fine.
What's, is there any fees or anything that we're going to be paying out that, obviously, if we don't go this way, we're going to lose?
I do think there are, there are some. So, for both of them, it would be about 18,000.
Does that change anything? That's a lot of money.
So, if we went through this, we'd have to pay the 18 if we choose not to?
I think we'd have to That's for, like, if we go through with the whole processing, with, we'd have to get all the paperwork in.
So, you'd pay 18,000 plus the interest? So, that's the cost, okay. I'll take, well, we can vote on the motion. Yeah.
All right, well, there is a motion on the floor.
Okay, so if we don't do it, what are our options? We have to pay cash.
We've already moved forward with financing the tanker, but we would just pay cash out of the water fund.
Which it's there for. Okay.
So, we just want to finance that portion.
When does this decision have to be made?
Pretty quickly, just because the water tower is going up or going to get started
Next week.
And then next week or the week after.
We're still in discussion, right? I mean, we raised our water rates, too.
It is in the capital
And we did, you know, look at that, and we're raising them, you know, and we had that big feasibility study that we had done.
How far, how far down does it put us if we pay cash?
We're fine, I mean, we'd be fine. It's, it's just, it was just the fin, I think I have it in here, that we have, the balance is about 1,130,000. So, we would still have a very healthy fund.
Plus 18,000 dollars.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, so it's, it was just another option I wanted to bring that was available.
Then there's really no break in interest, because you just paid it and that.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to provide the sale of a 393,000 general obligation bond for water tower maintenance and a fire truck. So, all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Motion fails. That makes sense just to pay that in cash.
Yeah, I'd like to propose a new that we pay just out of cash for a water tower.
Okay.
Motion on the floor to pay for the purchase of the water tower maintenance and the fire tanker truck.
Well, that fire tanker trucks are deep in.
Oh, you paid, okay, so just the fire?
Just the water.
So, it'll just be for the water, for the water tower maintenance? Are you second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that?
So, we need this motion to
And do we need a motion to pay cash?
To determine
I would say yes.
Okay, where was the bid on that again? Page 90-some?
94.
Yeah, so we already approved the bid that came in.
Right, okay.
It's 271,553.
And it was under, okay, that's right, okay. Did you get a second, Eric?
Yes.
All in favor of paying cash for the water tower maintenance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, passes four zero. Moving to Moving to number two, audiovisual upgrades for city council chambers.
Okay, so again, we had mentioned this at the last meeting, just doing further upgrades to our audiovisual under the CARES Act funds that we received. Again, we received about a hundred seventy-two thousand. So with that, I brought in Tierney again to reassess what we have in place and, and give them an idea of what more we're looking for. So one thing that we're looking for is live video and live conferencing capabilities. So we'd be able to do, to link into our YouTube, YouTube, do a live stream and then residents would be able to connect in. And they would be able to view it that way. We'd also have the capability of them participating as well, like.
What about the whole Jaguar thing?
That's our TV.
Yeah, so it incorporates that, but it's, it's, um, this provide, like, so we're connecting in, so we, but that, with Jaguar, that would have been more of a phone conferencing system.
Should be. No, you just put it on our channel, what is it, seven or eight? Seven, I think. When they turn on at six-thirty on Monday evening, turn on channel seven, they're city council. They don't have to participate. They can watch. And then it's recorded and you can play it again on a Saturday morning for people who didn't get to see it.
I was under, going under the understanding that we wanted to go on to our like Zoom or YouTube.
No, we want, we want this to be available to absolutely everybody. And Jaguar.
But I don't, like, I don't have Jaguar cable.
No, but they have provided us a channel for, for this specifically for city council and park board.
Yeah, but how do I get it if I don't have?
Well, then your other option, yeah, would be to get it on YouTube, but one of the reasons that we did all this was so that it can go live.
Right, it would be a live.
On Jaguar's channel in addition to all these other platforms.
Right, right, yeah. So it would be, um, I think it would, would be a combination of the both. So I can double check on that, but it was getting the technology to, to be able to do the live connection into, well, it was, I looked more into the YouTube Zoom part, but I can double check on the Jaguar part too. And then the ability to record it and then get it up like right after the meeting.
Should we just hold off on this until you're able to?
Yeah, I can double check for sure. Yeah, so the question was Jaguar.
To have it livestreamed on TV without necessarily having the interaction.
Okay, perfect.
Because people can view live.
Okay, so we can table that.
Table that one. Brings us to C three summer hours, request to extend to October.
Yeah, so it was just, staff was just inquiring as to whether council felt comfortable with extending hours at the end of October. Just with a lot of the projects going on right now, but I did provide a little information about our usual, our usual hours and then our current summer hours. It would, instead of ending September seventh, it would be October thirtieth.
Seems to be working now, okay, right? Correct?
No concerns from council members?
Um, I, I think, I mean, from how I see it, we do get people between the hours of seven and eight. So there are, there is increased traffic over the summer at those times. Um, I would say Fridays tend to be our less busy day. And then we, again, we always accommodate residents as well if they want to set up a meeting.
I think if it is something that we're gonna do, we have to figure out how to keep the office open on Friday afternoons. Either take turns, whatever it is that's gonna happen, but I get phone calls in the afternoon from people that are trying to get ahold of someone up here or, or whatever. So it does happen. And people come in after work, they do, or Friday afternoons. So it's, it's too, I've actually never been in favor of closing it on Friday like that, so the only way I would be in favor of it at all. And I also think October thirtieth is kind of too, too far out, but.
Well, do you wanna bring that back, see if we can come up a plan to stay open later on Fridays and then discuss this?
If the office was open regular hours and you guys could work it out with your schedules, then, then, you know, it is what it is. I, I guess I don't really care what, what hours are being worked. But I think with the amount of staff that we have, we can figure out how to keep city hall open just regular hours.
Yeah, we can either bring it back or, the one thing, I, I don't think we have another meeting and like our, I think our current hours are ending on September seventh.
Well, I'd make a motion to extend it until the next meeting then. With the understanding that the schedule's going to be looked at to try to keep city hall open.
Okay.
That's my motion, Eric.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion needed on that? Support that as well, so. Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Brings us to six D, number one, Discovery Park Basketball Court, Blue Jay Park Basketball Hoops.
Okay, um, so tonight, we're just, the park commission is requesting of the council to consider spending up to forty-five thousand on a full basketball court at Discovery Park. And then they're also proposing spending five thousand to update the basketball hoops at Blue Jay Park. So as part of, the, the park commission recently has been doing their, updating their long-term capital improvement plan. So with that, they, they have had several projects this year already. They did upgrade the equipment at Discovery Park. I do have a, have their, another long-term plan right here.
This is the updated one?
Yeah. And then the skate park equipment, that's gonna come in pretty quickly for installation. They installed a batting cage. So their, the last conversation was what can we do for the remainder of the year? And then what are our goals for the next years? So with that, the basketball court was one of the goals that they were looking at final, doing a final approval on this year and then the basketball hoops. So, um, and then if you look, just you can see kind of where their goals are in the future. Again, this will have to be relooked at because of where our budget is coming in at this year. We did talk about this, or this was put together before budget numbers came in. But this is, this is what they're asking the councils to consider this evening. It would, it would be paid out of the capital reserve.
Which is three sixty-five. So we had a big discussion about this. Kyle and Jason had a lot of work into getting quotes for the half basketball court. And when we met last week, Tuesday, we kind of looked at each park and we kind of wanted to kind of, once we do this basketball court at Discovery, then that park's pretty well done, except for possibly doing some sort of gazebo at some point. So because it's so much work and we, and our fund balance is very, is quite healthy. Again, from what Maggie gave different information, I don't think it would change the park board because it did actually come in a little lower than we originally thought when we were first kind of looking at all the projects. So that's kind of why they wanted to. And then we just added the updating the basketball, if we're already buying two hoops, just get two more and put it in. Like I said, we still will have a pretty healthy fund bal, balance going into next year. So even if we have to adjust our levy number down, we would still be able to accomplish projects that we have earmarked and maybe the bathrooms would just get moved out another year or something like that.
I'll make a motion to spend up to forty-five thousand dollars on a full basketball court at Discovery and up to five thousand dollars on basketball hoops at Blue Jay.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion needed?
How do we get forty-five thousand?
For the basketball court?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the breakdown, here's the breakdown. So it would be grading and excavating a concrete slab. It's, most of it's out of the concrete work. The basketball hoops are about, about five thousand, I think, including freight, right Kyle? And then. Okay. And then concrete around it. So it, it's, it's the total project cost. We estimated it to be about the thirty-seven to forty. Yeah, you're right.
The combination of both would be forty.
I might have miswrote. I think I miswrote this.
So it'd be under the forty-five.
So we're not, not to exceed forty-five thousand?
She has to amend her motion then. I'm just, that's what I'm curious about. Like, I'm seeing different, I just want to know what the motion's gonna be for. I will amend my motion. Back here. To spend up to forty-five thousand dollars on a full basketball court at Discovery, which also would include the basketball hoops at Blue Jay.
But it's a half court, isn't it? Oh, it is a full court? Okay. There was too many discussions. Okay. I'll second. Oh, you want to second?
You already did, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I'll second the new motion.
Any further discussion needed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to number two, the Gaga pit matting.
So, um, park commission also as part of wrapping up twenty twenty would be spending three thousand seven hundred on Gaga pit matting. So we do have one at Old Schoolhouse Park and one at Westridge Park now. Kyle, you'd put wood chips underneath and then the matting. So it wasn't originally planned for, for twenty twenty, but we did do the install at Westridge Park for the Gaga pit, new Gaga pit. So after more discussion at the park board, they decided that it would be a better surface. Otherwise, they do tend to get muddy and this would kind of help eliminate with the wood chips and then the matting. It would help allow kids to play even when it rains and.
Apparently the ball doesn't bounce. Apparently the ball doesn't bounce on the wood chip.
Or mud.
Right, yeah. So is the matting, how much? Okay. Thirty-six. For both pits? And that's just like the kind of matting that we have covering the half basketball court. That's what it looked like, the hexagonal thingies. Okay, it's more of a rubber though. Okay. But it's like the similar kind of concept. And those just kind of lay in there, sitting on top. Okay. So you can, hmm, it must be closer together than what it looks. Like their heel isn't gonna get stuck in there or twist an ankle. These are small squares. Well, hopefully you're not wearing heels in a Gaga pit. The heel of their foot? They're kids.
He's thinking like the heel of like a.
Cause in my head, these things are like this big and I'm like, well, you're.
Feet heels.
Okay, so they're specifically. They're made for Gaga pits? Yeah, I guess when you see the other one, it looks like they're smaller, but then, all right. I'll make the motion to purchase both of them for thirty-seven, thirty-seven thousand, or three thousand seven hundred.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion needed? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Board will be happy, thank you.
That brings us to city council reports.
I have anything?
I have nothing either.
Uh, I, we talked about what we had. I don't have anything.
Um, under other business, I just wanted to introduce Ellie Jacobson. Last day was Friday and so Ellie is, your official day was, your official official today was today.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
So you will be working the same hours as?
Yes, that then hasn't changed. Okay. To you guys and my supervisors, if that will change or not, depending on what you guys see fit through the end of the year. Currently it's Monday through Friday, two to ten.
Yeah.
So again, that's up to you guys and to my supervisors if that is going to change contract wise.
You new at the sheriff's office or?
I am.
How long have you been here?
I started in March, right, first week of COVID.
Oh, lucky you.
Yeah, it's been a crazy red.
Right, for sure. Where'd Joe go?
Joe went to Chaska.
Oh, wow, okay.
Now, his first day was today at Chaska PD.
Oh, okay. Well, congratulations to him.
And have you had a chance to talk to either the mayor or with Maggie to find out what our expectations are and what our priorities with the city are?
This is again, day one. I decided I.
Not even a half day yet here.
The council meeting hit on day one, so I figured I would at least stop in the meeting and.
Perfect.
Introduce myself to you all.
Thank you, Ellie.
And then I have not met the mayor yet.
I am smiling under my mask. So welcome.
Absolutely welcome. Glad to have you here.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. And welcome.
I will make a motion, or make a, have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion, second?
Ice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Move into the work session. Anybody need to, we need to take a break between the two sessions or continue on?
Depends on how long it's gonna be.
Oh, yeah, exactly. All right, well, it's called the city council workshop meeting to order.
Yeah, so one thing we wanted to get on for, for budget reasons is, I mean, we have lots to cover. I know we had some discussion items on the last meeting that we still have to bring back to the next meeting. But wanted to get a couple, a couple of these items on that I, that we really need to discuss for future planning. So with that, the first item is the twenty twenty-one street project. So for financing purposes and just planning purposes, Dave is here to, to go over that with, with me and you. Just again, the plan, our street plan is in our, in your packet. I think we originally were planning on redoing Fifth Street next year, but we wanted to have more in-depth discussion on that tonight and just for planning purposes, start budgeting and get, get the financing together and education. Because that's, that would be a more intense project than this no one overlay project that we chose here. So with that, I do believe we would be recommending Fifth Street as staff. And I'm just, and we've had residents actually contact us, asking us when that street was gonna be redone. But I guess we would need to discuss preliminarily the extent to which this street will be done, right Dave? And if that would include urban gutter and it would also, would we be redoing water and sewer as well?
Would it make more, and, and that would be in addition to what is already in here for our twenty twenty-one overlay, et cetera. On page six, correct?
Yeah, let me get that. So we're off of it, we're off a year. So we didn't start our projects until this year, so it's actually a twenty twenty.
Yellow.
But actually all of Fifth Street was.
Right.
Would be next year. And then I think we would also be jumping over the highway to the other Fifth Street too, right Kyle?
Yeah, that's what we'd like, Fifth Street and Third Street. All right, Fifth Street, Third Street.
So essentially, we'd be taking that twenty-twenty-eight project and moving that up for Fifth and Third. And then we would be doing those Fifth Street reconstructions.
Okay.
Um, with that, we would have to start, um, if we did go ahead with those, we'd have to start looking at our, you know, our assessment policy with reconstruction projects. Those tend to be more assessments as, um, and then mill and overlay, which is most of our, the majority of our other projects do not have assessments. So it would include a lot, a lot more planning than this year was. Um, yeah, so that's, that's where staff is coming from. Um, but we wanted to have a conversation tonight to see what your, your thoughts were on the project as well.
Do we know, um, I'm very familiar with the Ridge Road project, which was a similar project, um, ten years ago, eleven? I think it was eleven years ago, because I finally finished paying for it. Um, do we know, because I remember for Ridge Road, it was old, the sewer and water, and wasn't even like the right size. So that's why they, we, I think the city had made the decision to just pretty much, if we're already gonna rip the road up, you might as well replace those. And then, if I recall, there was an assessment and I, or I, the homeowner paid for the new connections, the sewer and the water, and then the curb and gutter was based on a percentage of footage. I think that's, I don't know. I think that's kind of what was proposed.
Yeah, and, and so, yeah, I, I mean, you're pretty much, I'm, I'm kind of going off the top of my head too a little bit. But yeah, we, we had a, it was a lump sum basically for the water and the sewer pieces of it. Everybody paid the same, because everybody was getting the same service. The street portion with the curb and gutter drainage piece was then based on the front footage. So the bigger lots got a bigger assessment than the smaller lots. Uh, that's the way that one was administered. That one also, I think that if, if we went all the, we offered to go all the way to the house with the sewer service to eliminate I and I, and, uh, that was above and beyond the lump sum connection, but then you could assess that. You got a new service all the way to your house, but then that could be assessed also, if I'm recalling correctly.
I don't remember that part.
And that's pretty typical too, anyway. Whenever you're doing those kind of major road projects, that's usually how it works.
Yeah, and, and the, the couple of things we had there, you're right, sewer, we had some significant issues with the way the sewer was constructed and performing. And then we also had some drainage issues that we were trying to correct with that. Uh, if you recall, that was when we purchased the property, um, at the end of Fifth Street and put a storm sewer outlet in, and we have a pond in there now. So we, we did some storm sewer improvements that weren't there previously. So one of the things, I think, if, if we were to move forward with reconstruction of Fifth Street, uh, I think the first thing that we should do is a feasibility study, where we basically can go through a process to define what the scope of the project is, what needs to be fixed. Um, is this gonna be turned into an urban section? Is it fine the way it is? What kind of drainage issues? And then, um, move forward in that manner. If we're gonna assess it, we have to do a feasibility study, so that would be kind of step one, I think would be to get that completed. Um, and then I think it's a question of how much, uh, how you want to engage the, the affected residents in that. Is this something that you're gonna kind of control from a council standpoint, determining the scope? If this is what needs to be done from a city standpoint and the infrastructure we need in place, because we need to maintain it, make sure it's working right? Or is it gonna be more of a open dialogue and, and are you asking people what they want? And, and I, I'd say there's benefits to either one of those approaches or a combination of them. But, um, you know, from knowing, thinking back to the project that we had did, done, you know, Ridge Road and, uh, Fourth Street and the side roads there, um, one of the goals of that project was to get things up to city standards. Uh, we had some, you know, issues that we already talked about, but, um...
Because that's been the push, is when we are doing improvements that we're bringing up to city standards.
And that was one of the things that when we started looking at the east side of Highway twenty-five, kind of ran into that same dilemma. Okay, if we're gonna reconstruct these, does this, uh, do we go ahead and reconstruct these to city standards? Or is it just pavement, uh, you know, connecting Blue Jay and Highway twenty-five? Um, the, the side streets are kind of interesting, because, um, you don't have a lot of frontage there. You basically have four properties, uh, that, that you're, you have on, you know, between Highway twenty-five and Blue Jay, you have four corner lots that butt your city street. So it's a little bit of a different setup compared to Fifth Street, where everybody's kind of in a row, uh, butting it. Fifth Street's gonna be, uh, a little different though, because one side of the road, the north side of the road is basically one property owner for the majority of it. Um, so there, there's just some, there's questions to be asked and answered, just to kind of figure out how this all comes together. So from, from our standpoint, I guess the first question is, is that seem, is that our priority for next year? Is to continue on with kind of the schedule that had been laid out, that the reconstruction of Fifth Street, and then if we add, uh, Third Street, you know, at least to, to evaluate the feasibility of it or look at the options? If that's the priority, then what I'd propose to do is come back with a fee estimate to get the feasibility study approved, and that would be kind of step one in starting to plan for next year's job.
I don't think there's a lot of life left in Fifth Street. Walking and going through another rough winter probably won't, going through like two more winters before a project. Um, and now that Mayor Lutheran's entrance is rerouted, because they use that as their main entrance. So a lot of that wear on that road is from a lot of that traffic for how many years before they, they moved it? So it's probably a good time to do it, because everything got rerouted. So I, I would be in agreeance to look into at least starting the conversation.
I agree. I think it, it needs to be done, and now's probably the time to do it.
And it's part of that neighborhood, and it just looks kind of weird. It's not even, doesn't even have, uh, curbing and, like, it looks kind of unfinished.
And the lot at the end of the street, they kind of keep popping up as far as trying to figure out what, uh, the status of that is, how it affects them to try to build something there too. So i- if that's, if that's the direction, that's easy enough for us to at least, again, come back to you with a, a scope of service and fee estimate to, to get the feasibility study underway, and then, uh, we can take it from there.
And when do we start just like letting, I mean, people who aren't necessarily following the council, that live on that street, when do you start engaging them to say that we're starting to have conversations about redoing your road? You know, we'd like you to be part of those necess, you know, just to hear?
Yeah, I, I think the reconstructions, what I would say is you'd, you'd want to have some sort of an open house. I'd start with a, a work session with the, let us do a little preliminary work to kind of start figuring out the lay of the land, working with public works to kind of know what issues are there that need to be addressed, as long as we're gonna be doing this project. Have a workshop with the council this fall, I would say. And, uh, you know, kind of see what's on your mind and what's making sense, what's not making sense. And then at that point, um, we can have a, I, I'd say, schedule an open house, where we invite the people that live on that road to come in. And we basically start by saying, well, this is how far we're at, here's the things we're looking at, here's, here's kind of from our perspective where we think this is going. And, uh, give them a chance to say, yeah, that sounds good, but you missed this, this, and this. Or if you think that's what you're gonna do in my road, you're crazy. And, uh, you know, you start getting a sense for at least, um, what people like and don't like about what you're proposing to do. And, and then again, at some point, you know, and, and you know from the, the project, I think it was two thousand seven, actually.
Yeah, uh, I had a newborn.
Yeah.
That was super fun to cart through my neighbor's yard, because I couldn't get into my driveway with a newborn, and then my washer broke. It was super fun. No, it was actually not that bad.
Yeah.
It really wasn't bad at all, and the construction company was very accommodating. But there was only a short window where I didn't actually have access to my driveway. And the only thing was remembering which garbage can yours was, when you had to bring him out to like, uh, because he couldn't have it in front of your home.
Yeah, and generally speaking, that went, you know, if I remember correctly, to, I mean, no, nobody's excited for that kind of project. But generally speaking, there were enough issues with drainage, condition of the road, and other things that, um, the people that were affected at least understood that we got a problem and something needs to be done. Um, which, which makes the process a little bit easier to navigate when...
The road actually got lowered.
Yeah.
Because my house used to be lower than the road, and now it's a little more even. So yeah, I mean, I think, I just was curious when you start letting, letting the residents know, to say, we're starting to talk about your road, we'd like to...
Yep.
Let you know.
And, and you know, just kind of where we're at with, uh, you know, the health, the, the health situation, the pandemic too, there's other things we can do from the standpoint of engaging people without necessarily having a traditional open house, where we all invite everybody here too.
But the thing is, is we know we're gonna be working on it next year, so can we at least send a newsletter out to the residents on Fifth, saying, hey, this is part of our projects for next year? Just want to let you know there's gonna be more information coming. So that way, they're not sitting there, and all of a sudden, February comes, like, wait a minute, what's this open house? And what's this, you know, assessment? So if you can just say, this is our plan for next year. There's gonna be more information to come.
Because they're gonna be like, well, how much is it gonna cost me?
Right, but at least...
But to that point, I mean, the timing of that's perfect too. If we get, if we get you the, kind of the scope of our services, the authorized that, then that's a perfect kind of segue into saying, hey, just so you know, we've, uh, engaged our city engineer to start looking at this and, and, uh, be on the lookout for more information and opportunities to, to, uh, voice your opinion when we start defining what this project looks like.
And if that means just writing up a little letter and sticking it in their doors, then fine, because it's not a whole lot on that street, so...
No.
Okay. Any more on that?
Thank you.
Next, Dave. Twenty-twenty-one budget fund, general fund budget draft.
I think I can go over this pretty, pretty, I mean, you're familiar with the format that I've used. I, I'm pretty sure it, it is not too much different in that sense. Um, so again, we're kind of entering the preliminary budget session or section of our budget. And so we do need to pass the preliminary levy on September, at our, um, September twenty-first meeting. And it's due to the county by the end of September. So that's where we're at right now. And then, as you're aware, we have truth in taxation in November, and then we have to do our final budget in December. So we have our general fund and our utilities fund. Our general fund, again, property taxes, also state aid permits funds. That funds our operating, um, budget for the most part. And then on enterprise funds are connection fees and monthly utility bills. Um, so I don't want to go into too much about this, because we all know the process, um, that we're preparing the budget, we're in the preliminary phase right now. And what, with the preliminary, once we set it, we can only go down, we cannot go up. So preliminary budgets end up, are usually more cushioned and are higher. Um, and then the process, again, residents are able to comment at the truth and taxation meeting when we present our, kind of our draft final budget. So, um, these are our historic, historical tax rates. I just wanted to give you an idea about that. Tonight, my preliminary is fifty-four seventy. Um, that's high, but there's, I want to go into that a little bit, um, how we will reduce that further. I just want that cushion for now. Um, so just a little bit change in our debt. Um, so, um, right now, what's kind of boosts, like, we have had a, a little bit of a reduction in some of our, um, so our sewer debt service went down a little bit. Um, and then the others stayed pretty much the same. Um, we do have the addition of the final, um, of the fire station. That, that is the highest that we've gone. Because if we did, if we do the fire department or fire station, um, we would have to take out a construction loan next year. That's the highest that we budgeted, because that's the highest we think it would go. But that, we do think it would be more likely to be more forty, thirty-five, forty. But we wanted to budget high, because we don't have the bids in yet. So that's, that's a big factor in why our levy is going up. So, um, so yeah, as you can see, it's about a twenty percent increase. Um, and then operating, I wanted to give you an idea of the final twenty-twenty operating. So we do have a difference of about ninety-one thousand, uh, five hundred dollars or nine point one percent. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail as well. Um, and then this kind of shows the difference in each area. So gen, and, and kind of why things are going up. And what, and we're still doing a lot of, this is still a lot of things that need to get planned out, um, projects. Uh, we still have to talk about wage and, well, actually, sort of, sort of wage increases, because we do have the union contract. But then just increases in public safety for, um, police contract and some staff changing that we're planning on. Um, so we did get an increase in local government aid, um, of about thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars from last year. Um, we did get, we have about eight, we're, we're always assuming about twenty to twenty-five houses each year. We're at eighteen right now. And then last year, we had a final of thirty-three.
Did we account for that full government aid last year, or did we take some of that off?
Nope.
Do you know what I mean?
That's the...
We accounted for the whole thing when we did the budget. A lot of years will like say, let's just take off, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, just in case we don't get all of it, or this happens, or, and I can't remember what we did last year.
No, we...
We took it all? Okay.
Is there any potential to lose any of that with the huge episodes?
I think that's the final number that they, that the state passes. So they, that's, that's what they'll allocate. I think it's more fiscal disparities that can change a little bit. But local government aid is usually, stays where it's at. Um, and then revenues, um, just showing where, um, where our revenues are. So fire contracts, um, state aid went up a little bit. Um, and then license and permits, I kept that the same, because I think it's better to, most of our revenues there are from housing permits, like new housing or, or, um, fences or plumbing or stuff like that. But, um, oh, actually, mine went down a little bit. I will change that. Um, so I just wanted to give you an idea of what it, what it, the property tax levy is kind of looking at right now. And my fire capital is off too, sorry. So that's supposed to be a hundred right now. This is where, um, I did make some reductions right now, because I tried to get that tax rate to be a little bit more manageable. So this is where we might have to play around a little bit, um, because I did add the public works building in there. But I still want to keep funding, you know, some of these capital projects if we, or levies if we can, just to keep, um, adding to those funds each year as we, as we plan projects. Um, but this will probably be, um, a bigger in-depth discussion at a, at another workshop. I mean, we can talk about it tonight too, but it'll be when we're, yeah, are trying to bring the budget down a little bit, we'll have a deeper discussion into that. Um, so this is kind of where, um, where, how you calculate your, your tax rate. So you have what you think you need to levy for your, for taxes for your operating, and then capital, fund levy, your debt levy, um, you add those together. We did get an increase in fiscal disparities. So we're at about two hundred forty-six instead of two hundred twenty-six, but we also had to pay in a little bit more too, which is six, six, about six thousand more. So that helps with our, with our levy, but it, um, you know, it's, um, still at fifty-four point seven percent. I'll go into that a little bit more. So the reason why we're seeing, um, seeing this is because historically, our, um... So the reason why we're seeing, seeing this is because historically our market values, let me see if I can zoom in on this. Last year was 9.76 growth. So that was in construction and our market value growth. This year it's at 2.29. So if you can, if you see under the market change, we're actually negative. So we went down negative, we went down 11% or 0.11%. So, and then our new construction went, was it 2.3, 2, 2.35? So as you know, that, that, that means that. Or like the amount, you know, when we assume, make assumptions that there's going to be more, like our taxes are going to be spread amongst more, like, and we can levy a little bit. We have that little bit of a buffer. We just don't have that as much this year. So we're just, again, we're going to have to rethink, rethink our budget a little bit more. We're going to have to look at our capital projects a little bit more. And we're going to have to just make some decisions because we just, we're going to have to make some tougher decisions, I think, this year to get our, if we want to maintain our goal of seeing a levy or tax levy of 50%. But, I mean, the good thing is, is that in the past, we've been able to use that extra, like, you know, we have that growth, we've been able to put it into our capital funds. But it is kind of, you know, we don't, we want to keep putting more into our capital funds, but it is a, an area that we can cut back to and put less in and, and be able to keep our tax rate at 50%. So that's, that's kind of where I'm proposing. But then also, I, I do think it's a difference of like about 45, 50,000 that would get us down to 50%. So I'm thinking when we do get that final number and if the fire station moves forward, I think that'll be the big area where that, we'll see that reduction. And, and get us back to that, to where we need to be. So, oh, this is comparison to carbonizing aid. But it did include, and you can go through this a little bit more in depth too, where you, where I saw just some, where we saw some increases. And, and we do have, and again, I went high because it's better to be higher. I'm still working out, again, engineering projects. Where, where are we going to have to see engineering? And so these numbers can fluctuate a little bit. But I wanted to at least give you an idea and get some feedback before we bring this back in September for the preliminary budget. So I am looking for, I wanted to give you the, kind of where we're at market growth wise. And then I wanted to accept any feedback or any, anything that's standing out right now that you'd like to see changed. But I would still say, let's shoot for a higher percentage for the preliminary. And then we can have some deeper discussions into, into this when we, before December.
I think it looks really nice, Maggie. It's easy to understand and you did a good job. When you make the changes that you wanted to make and fix those couple of things, can you print it off for me?
Yes.
I like making notes on a piece of paper.
So yeah, that's where we're at right now. We'll have another workshop where we'll go through this more, unless you want to go through it more tonight. But this was just kind of to get the information in front of you and just show you where we're at.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. Good info. I understand, you kind of see how all the numbers come together.
And I think it's pretty common for us to start in the 54 range. We have, I think, almost every year, some years it was like 56, 57, so I think it's pretty common.
What we did with Park Board, where we can, can you try to figure out a way to get this into a document where we can?
Um, it might, yeah, I can do some tweaking, like to this one, this is the tax rate. I know how I generate the tax rate. So if we like played around with the capital a little bit, and then we played around with where, where we think the general, where we want our general operating levy to come in. Taxes for debt, that's a tricky one. You can't really change in your debt, the amount that you owe and. Well, your established debt. Whereas, again, I think the fire station will come down quite a bit, but we want to shoot high until we know what that final number is. I think I could come up with something though that we could, we can play around with a little bit more.
And, and this actually would really help me when we were talking about the fire station in general. Because the first couple of years, we were going to, you have a construction loan and then we were just going to pay like interest before we actually started paying principal. But that's because this, you know, probably this goal water and sewer refunding bond drops off. So just for future, something like this where it's like, here's all our bonds. And then, because yes, this number's going to be low this year. I'd like to see, okay, well, I want to set up other councils for like, this is why we can afford it or.
And that's what, if you, and I can re, I think.
Did you already kind of send me that, but?
Yeah, and then the long-term plan, the long-term capital plan kind of spells that out too.
But I think it was like multiple tabs, which confused me.
Yeah, I can, I can.
So I, I, this like is a good visual for me.
Yeah, I can get you.
You know, I mean. I mean, this would be super simple to just put into an, I mean, I know you don't have Excel on that computer.
Not on this one, but I can download it. I just, I need to get it downloaded on here.
You know, but that's just like, I think it'd just be easy to like, okay, so here and then this, you know, that would be really beneficial for me just to see how it all plays out so that you can see where things are moving. And it will help us also with our street funding, you know, and other projects that are coming down that we're probably going to have to bond for as well. If that makes sense. Just a little, I mean, and if you want, I can come in and we can.
Yeah, I can, I think there's like, we have all the documents and this might not all be the same, like spreadsheet. So we can work to get it all compiled into one area, so.
It might be just an easy working document that you can kind of just see that, like a live thing to say like, okay, well now it's, we're official, well, the fire station came in at 45. Oh, see, changes that. And then to your, 2023, that 234 is zero. But the fire station would probably be around this. That's what I was just kind of.
Okay.